Order this planning board meeting of Monday, May 16th, 2022. This evening, we have all five members of the planning board with us. Bob is remote as he usually is, so votes this evening will be taken via roll call. We also have Joe Giannowitz, the town planner, with us this evening, as well as Jeff Morris at Director of Land Use Management, a rare treat. Welcome back.
Appreciate your kind words.
We miss you.
We miss you. All right, this evening, we will start as we always do with open forum. Anyone on the board have any items for open forum this evening?
Nope.
Nope.
I just have a public service announcement. You two can help me out. Now that we no longer have the Eagle, or whatever it was called, for public hearing notices, they are now posted in Lowell Sun. Is there a specific day they go in, or do you just have to read every day and hope you catch it?
We typically aim for Fridays.
Fridays.
Yeah. Two weeks prior, a little bit more than two weeks and a little bit more than a week prior to.
So support your local newspaper and get a subscription.
There we go. Bob, anything for open forum?
No, I'm fine.
Oh, okay.
You're on mute.
Nothing, nothing for open forum? Oh, great. The only item I have is that next meeting, we should probably do board appointments and committee appointments and things like that. So can we add that to the next agenda? Awesome, thank you. Joe?
We like it the way it is.
Okay, we can decide that. We still should have as an agenda topic. Joe, anything for open forum?
Just if anybody's here for Five Makepeace Road or 504 Groton Road, both those applicants have requested to continue without any discussion to June 6th. And just by a brief update, we did make some minor changes to the Purpose section of the Adu bylaw and sent it over to Town Council to begin that review process.
Oh, great.
Now it's in their review, and we'll wait to see what they say.
Fantastic. And Jeff, anything for open forum?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public have something for open forum? Please, up to the microphone.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. And at this point, I'd sort of like to take your temperature about a suggestion because I think I need to go to the Select Board about this. But I talked to the Conservation Commission at their last meeting, and they were fine with it. And I would just like to propose that for meetings that take place in this room, the proponents' area is moved over to here so that the audience can see and hear what they're saying in an easier way. And I think also, if the proponents bring things that go on easels, that could also happen back here, probably because they're familiar with them, but everybody could see that. So I just sort of wanted to see if you would think that's okay, in which case I can go to the Select Board and ask that because apparently they're in charge even though they're not here anymore.
Gotcha.
So recklessly opining here. So it's the planning board's meeting. If they want a different layout, as long as it doesn't create any conflicts or accessibility issues, we can certainly look to different ways if that's the preference of the board.
And I checked with the videographer, and he said that's no problem because the camera's over there. So that would be fine, too. And it's up to the proponent, I guess, whether they want physical things here on easels, or whether they would submit them to you for display up there. So, but I love how this is so big up there because not everybody who displays up there, Joe, you're doing a great job. So, so what you're saying is for the planning board, I may not need to go to the Select Board?
I think it's the planning board's meeting. If they have a different approach to their layout, unless there's some reason why we can't that I can think of, we can certainly explore that if you're amenable to that.
Anybody on the board have an opinion?
Yeah, I just, I think it would be hard to look kind of this way.
Right, I think they're presenting.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, if there's a way that what they're presenting can be more visually seen, or if they, it can be projected up there. Joe, I think you do that when you can.
But some of it is talking, and they have their back to the audience. I mean, here's a radical idea. What if they were up there and you all were on the sides? I mean, I just thought of that right this second because that would meet your criteria, Darren.
Yeah. I agree with Darren. I think it would be difficult to having it over there for the give and take with the board. It's also a safety issue with potentially blocking the exit. And as far as, they would have to go back behind where you are now, so they would kind of be off on the hinterland.
Who would?
The applicants, because the desk would have to go in that.
The desks would go right here.
I don't.
I mean, I'd just switch around like this. So it really doesn't block anything more than it's already blocked.
I guess, but it is, I'm just thinking that.
It's really hard, if you're coming out as a public, to listen to what's being said. And it's just, it's not a good dynamic. It's exclusionary.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any speakers in the room or not. It doesn't look like it.
No, there are, there definitely are, those are speakers.
But they're probably not tied into the microphone.
What if, sorry to do this to you, Jeff. What if Jeff moved over there and the proponents were here with the longer desk? You know, but this desk is bigger than where Jeff is sitting right now, I think.
But you're going to have to really rely on the screen because even if they're there, they tend to face the easel towards us, not the audience, so that we, the board, can see it. So you're going to have the same issue with seeing the easel.
If they did it this way, you could all see it.
But you guys can't. So you really, we just need a way to get all the applicants to put the stuff up on the big board. Anyway.
I think, so I understand the concern. Well, I guess, you know, I'm not hearing strong, strongly in favor on the board's side. I'm sort of ambivalent. I'm not, I'm not personally opposed to it, but I do think, you know, your point that they are presenting to the board and, like, you know, Darren, if they're there, Darren's going to have a hard time looking past Jeff to sort of look at them.
But if they're there and Jeff's there, that's even easier.
Right, but Jeff can be gone.
I'm happy to stay home.
Discourage Jeff to attend the meetings.
I wasn't a plant on Jeff's behalf tonight. Anyway.
Let us, let us think about it.
Okay.
And maybe we can have a further discussion. I mean, I guess, first of all, I'd like to have the feasibility on the AV side, and to your point, accessibility, because if we move, if we extend the desk out there, is that far enough away from that entryway?
Well, it's just also if there's easels inside. We just want to make sure that we satisfy all accessibility issues.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe there can be a conversation amongst town staff, and you guys can come back to us with the feasibility of that, and maybe what some potential layout options would look like.
Could it be required to present digital versions of everything they present?
Well, I would, I mean, that would be something that probably would be helpful is say that they need to get anything that they want presented in so that at least the present, I mean, I think the presentation materials is almost more important. I mean, I think we hear a number of applicants, and it's, the majority of them are very easy to hear with or without a microphone, I would say. A number of folks come to mind that we hear from all the time, and they don't have any issue being heard. I'm just saying. And then, you know, if we have a quiet applicant, we could ask them to speak up, or we could have them stand at the microphone or something so that it can be more easily heard.
Yeah, the microphones aren't mic to the room, though. They're all in my.
Or TV.
Recording.
Now we're back to that. All right.
Yeah.
We can do some research.
Okay, it's just harder with backs. So thank you very much for consideration.
Okay.
I did, Mr. Chairman, forget to mention something. So currently, as some of you may know, the town did secure a grant for municipal vulnerability preparedness, and we're in the process of conducting a tree and invasive species inventory. So if you do see folks out there from Davy Resource Group, they are actually working for the town and collecting information on trees that are generally within the public way, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I ask Jeff if that information is up on the town website as well?
We have a webpage, but we don't have anything on the main page alerting people to that. We were looking at maybe putting something there.
Yeah, that might be advisable.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other topics for open forum? That was the most full open forum we've had for a while. Okay, so we'll move on to our public hearing topics. The first is PB 2201, Site Plan Review at Five Makepeace Road. As Joe mentioned at the start of the meeting, the applicant has requested to continue without discussion to the June 6th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Removed.
Second. Motion in a second to continue 2201 to the June 6th, 2022 Planning Board meeting here in Meeting Room 201 at Town Hall, 7:00 PM. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. The next public hearing topic is PB 2211, Site Plan Review, Stormwater Permit at 504 Groton Road. The applicant on this one has also requested to continue without discussion to the June 6th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Removed.
Second. Motion in a second to continue PB 2211 to the June 6th Planning Board meeting here in Meeting Room 201, 7:00 PM. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. All right. Now, we have PB 2213, which is a scenic road permit at 59 Hildreth Street, and PB 2216, a stormwater management permit at 59 and 63 Hildreth Street. This is a new public hearing. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
Removed.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Slager from Allen Engineering. Here on behalf of Premium Homes and KC Building. Russ Traywick is with me to my left, and he's looking forward to building his new home at 59 Hildreth Street. The property is located on the north side of Hildreth Street, pretty much opposite Parkhurst Road, which is the entrance to Hildreth Hills condominium. This property had a, an old house on it with an old garage, and you may recognize it from historical pictures of the, you know, garage with a bunch of cars and all kinds of other stuff out in the front. All of that has been removed, and we're going to put in two new homes. The home at 63, which is on Lot 1, has already been constructed, or it's under construction now, it's been framed. And the construction of the house at number 59 triggers the stormwater permit requirements. The total project would alter about 1.6 acres of land. In addition to that, we are proposing to alter two sections of the stone wall, but we are not proposing to cut down any trees within the public right-of-way. The only thing we're doing in the scenic road is altering approximately 40 feet of wall, which will be reconstructed in place, and that's to accommodate the two driveway openings. And as Jeff wanted me to reiterate, we are not cutting down any trees within the public right-of-way.
Thank you.
We did receive comments, going back to the stormwater management aspect of it. The engineering department has issued a renew, a review of the drainage calculations, site plan erosion control measures and whatnot. They did have some minor comments that can easily be addressed. The septic system on number 59 has not been designed yet, so we could certainly accommodate their 50-foot separation that they pointed out. They're also, pointed out some issues that may be in play with the rain garden adjacent to the retaining wall. Again, we have laid out a patio area. We're still working through the final design of the home and the final landscape design, so there may be some tweaking to that area as well. And when we do that, we will make whatever necessary changes we do need to for the rain garden to prevent the water from basically short-circuiting through the rain garden, through the wall. It's going to perform and provide the treatment and filtration that it's supposed to have. There is a requirement or a recommended condition of approval that would require proposed plot plans. And once we have the final house design and final, you know, patio and whatnot layout, we'll submit those to engineering for review. So with that, I will turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you very much. Joe, any items on this from town staff before we go to the board?
Nothing else to add, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Okay, let's go to the board. Darren, any comments?
No, so thanks. I saw the comments that Joe sent over today, so it looks pretty benign. It's like you guys probably handle all that stuff that engineering's come back with already. The only question I have, I guess, is, you know, two cuts on the stone wall, but it looks like you're looking to reuse the stone to sort of frame the both entrances of the driveway, similar to what was done closer to the center, I would imagine, more recently.
What was that?
There was another more recent project we had up closer to the center. They did a nice job of replacing sort of the stone wall they took out and, yeah.
Similar to that, yeah.
Similar to that, that'll be great. No, otherwise, I think it's an improvement of, what was there?
Okay.
Yeah, that front end loader that was there for about 35 years.
Thanks, Darren. Yeah, thanks. Mike?
No, I really don't have anything else. I think it would look fine. I really don't think there's much of a wall there is now, anyway. I think it will be an improvement. I think the house that's gone up looks great, so I don't have any issue with this.
Great. Thank you. Kate?
Ditto what I've just said. The house looks very nice. It'd be nice getting all the poison ivy away from that wall. So I don't have anything. My only comment is I would like to see the draft decision before we vote on it. And I, so I, I don't really, I don't know what your timeframe is, but our next meeting is the 6th. And if staff, I would think it's a pretty simple draft decision. If we could get it by the 6th, I'd be much happier rather than closing on voting on something I haven't had a chance to review.
We were kind of hoping we'd have it tonight, actually. He sold his house. He's going to be homeless on Friday.
Understood. Okay, any other comments?
Nope, that was it.
Yeah, I agree with everything that was said. Yeah, we have the very similar wall, very close to the center, so familiar with the concept. Only question I have was, did I miss something? Is there going to be, there's going to be a covenant, correct, for this property? And are we going to get to see that language for the restriction?
What do you mean? What covenant?
But I seem to recall, I think they have to, they have to agree to certain things for the stormwater management.
I think it's just an easement, but the easement, Bob, for the connecting pipes? I think, is that what you're talking about?
A maintenance agreement.
Yeah, I don't think it's a covenant. I think it's kind of out of our realm. It's an easement if they're sharing the pipe between the properties.
And a maintenance.
Also, I think your requirements, weren't there for yearly inspections, et cetera?
I think that would be part of the maintenance plan that's put together by the applicant. I think that's fairly typical.
Yeah, it's a fairly boilerplate document that gets recorded with the deeds to maintain the stormwater features as shown in annual reporting.
Yeah.
So, Bob, you wanted an opportunity to review that document?
I was just asking if we, if we can see a draft of that, yeah. I think it would be. I didn't see anything in the packet. Was I missing something?
We don't usually have a draft.
Usually have the engineering department review, approve it as the condition of approval.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yep, okay. So, okay. So Kate would prefer that we have the draft decision prior to taking action. What's the rest of the board's pleasure on that one? Oh, I have no comments. I don't have any issues with reconstructing the wall. It looks like the wall is fairly overgrown from the pictures that are included here as well, so I think I agree that it could actually be an improvement where we might be actually be able to see the stone wall. That'd be nice. But as far as taking action tonight versus waiting for a draft decision, Joe, I assume it's not going to be a problem to have a draft decision by the meeting on the 6th, or would it be?
I don't think it would be an issue to have a draft for the 6th, no.
Okay. I appreciate the homelessness situation, but I do also appreciate the board liking to see decisions before we take final action on them. What's everybody else's feeling on that?
I don't, I mean, I think this is really mostly a stormwater management issue. So I don't, I don't, I would hate to hold it up for that, right? Because we're not going to, engineer's going to sign off on it, and that's their, in my opinion, their realm. So for the, for the scenic road, unless there's, you know, people in the audience that have some big issues with it, then I'm fine with the stone walls. And like I said, I hate to have people come back for that, in my opinion.
We would like to get started on tree clearing, too, to help the site dry out so it makes it more workable.
Yeah, but you don't need the decision for tree clearing. This is an ANR lot.
Well, no, we need the stormwater decision.
Yeah, I would say I think the comments are fairly minor. I think that they can be worked out with engineering pretty easily. The scenic road piece is pretty straightforward, I think, too.
Bob, what is your opinion?
I'd kind of like to see the decision at this point. I mean, in all language, so I'm with Kate on this.
Gotcha. All right, let's see if there's anybody in the audience. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak to PB 2213, 59 Hildreth, and 63 Hildreth Street? Okay, there's not, so no help on that front. Yes, Jeff?
I'm wondering if perhaps there's some opportunity. The board could still consider closing the hearing tonight, and they could take at least later action on the draft decision. You don't necessarily have to keep the hearing open for that, and that could eliminate some variables, at least for the applicant.
Yeah, but I'm not going to vote on the decision until I've read it.
We have on some more recent projects as well, draft decision.
And I didn't like them either. And we never got copies to review afterwards, so.
I think we did in one case.
In one, but not in another.
Yeah.
So the other thing to keep in mind is that there are two separate decisions tonight, and do you share the same concerns for both the scenic road permit for the stone walls as well as the stormwater management permit?
Well, I mean, I think the stormwater management permit is the one that...
That's the only one that has a public hearing.
Right, and it's the one that they need, and it's probably the one that I would assume gives us the most cause to worry the decision.
Now you earn your pay.
I know. Thank God, it's nothing. All right, well, look, I don't think it's right if we have two members of the board expressing that they prefer to have the draft decision, right? So before we take a vote. So I guess we will continue this matter to the meeting on the 6th, and then we will take action once we have the benefit of the draft decision. Is there a motion to continue?
I will just ask, I think, the applicant, I appreciate, you're homeless, but you have money to rent a room. But I guess we have to have some approval from you to extend timelines if we're going until June 6th.
Oh, yeah, we will need to, we will need to get a, we'll need to get an extension on time. Do you want to put this to a vote tonight, then?
Uh, no.
Then we'll, then we'll graciously accept your extension on time. Awesome, thank you. Is there a motion to continue PB 2213 to the June 6th meeting of the planning board here at 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 201?
So moved.
Oh, and please, a draft decision. Thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Thank you very much. See you on the 6th.
Did you want to friendly amend PB 2213 and 2216?
Thank you, yes. Amendment accepted and apologize for my miss. I should have continued both.
Oh.
Thought you were being efficient, so.
I was. Unfortunately, I, my efficiency lent itself to a little bit of sloppiness there. All right, our next public hearing item is PB 2215. We're going to go in the Wayback Machine here a little bit on this one. As an aside, Mike, do you know what the number one song was in 2005?
It was "We Belong Together" by Mariah Carey,
which is apropos of nothing, other than we're about to talk about 2005, and we are together.
And where did you find out that ticket?
Google. All right, so this is a new one. So is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB 2215?
Removed.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor of waiving the public hearing notice, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to open PB 2215? Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the records, Attorney Melissa Robbins here for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Lauren Cusano, Don Cusano, and Jeff Scenarian there with the development team, and also Jeff Brem. This is the first time I've had a public hearing opened with Mariah Carey reference, so I'm going to try to roll with that. We're here tonight for 85 Carlisle Road. It's also shown on your plans as 1, 2, and 3 Amareque Way. But I think the addresses are actually now 1, 2, and 3 Amareque Way. We're here tonight for a modification of an existing definitive subdivision and flexible development, which you were right, was approved in 2005 and 2006. This is noted in your staff report. This is not your standard application. This is the first time that I've ever seen the words "unique," "strange," and nuanced in the staff report, but I agree. But this project is unique in that it was approved in 2005. The site was cleared, the site work was commenced. I'm going to let Jeff Brem go through exactly what was completed in a minute. But as is stated in the staff report, there's a reasonable argument that all the work has started out here and that the permits have vested, and that there's no reason for us to be here tonight. The decisions were recorded, the plans were endorsed, the bonds put in place, the general infrastructure was installed. I like to call these the plug-and-play lots. I mean, they were really ready to go. But I also agree with the staff comments in your report that there's realistic issues about details out here when you have a project that is 15 years old. Tiny issues like just revising the plans to get rid of the hay bales and put in the swales and update some of the notes and infrastructure that'll slightly change from the approval. But also for very practical reasons, such as getting a fresh review from your engineering staff. The roadway's been in there for some time. It's noted in the report that this is something should be examined from Mr. Starrett. And also, we have to update the bond information, so we need a new number that takes into consideration whatever work we have to do out there on the roadway. And also, we have a new order of conditions, and just updating the plan to be in conformance with that order of conditions, that's all a good idea. So although there's no changes that are being made to the subdivision itself, there's no changes to the lot lines, the layout of the roadway. Really, the only changes are the locations of the house and the septic locations. We're still tonight here asking for a modification, really so that we can have a clean set of plans and make sure that we can come to today's standards to the extent applicable. You can see in your application, I did ask for a stormwater permit as well. Any of you that read the two permits, you can see that even from the 2005 standards, we did seek a waiver from the stormwater standards even from that time. So I will need engineering staff to also take a review of the stormwater that's there today and as designed, to make sure that it's safe and, to the extent applicable, get a stormwater permit. I think that there were some conditions in the original permit, which were to deal with the historic home. Anybody that's been out there knows that the historic home was actually demolished in 2006, the town couldn't move it. So we did have a new design for the home actually approved by the Historic Commission in the last few months. I think there's a copy of their letter in the application, they did like it. We're working on putting a stone wall out there per their requests. We did go through the order of conditions process, we did get a new order of conditions, so that work is all done. I actually recorded that order of conditions today. Really, the next step forward here would be to allow Mr. Starrett and staff to get out there on site to review the plans, to review the stormwater, and to come back to this board at their next meeting with their comments in tow, and just to update the decision. Before I go any further, what I would like to do is just turn over to Jeff Brem for a minute, just so that he can go through with the board what actually has been constructed out there, so you can just get a better understanding.
Great.
Thank you, Melissa. Jeff Brem, Mizobram Corporation, 142 Littleton Road, Westford. Joe, can you buzz over to GR1, the grading plan? So in the package, you'll see we have septic plans, a sketch showing the difference between the old locations of the houses, the new locations of the houses. We've updated the notes, we have a landscape plan, we have the subdivision plan, existing conditions plan, which I know needs to be adjusted to take off the houses, and then we have this plan here. So...
This is the 2005, do you want 2022?
The 2022.
It's pretty much the same thing.
Oh, wait a minute, that one showed the houses, the difference, yeah.
So there's the plan in reference with the two different houses.
So what color is what?
Blue is new, orange is approved.
Blue is new, okay.
Thank you.
Red is red, is what I'm used to.
We used orange. I can't tell you why, we just did.
Okay.
Maybe the red was too bold, I don't know. So there's the location, you can see the differences, not much, but there is some differences. All right, now if you will, Joe, please scroll down. So these are the septics for each of those, they've been submitted and approved, all three septics, and the backup, as he's going through this. So they started out going to conservation first, because they had an order of conditions that had expired, and what they wanted us to do was get a certificate of compliance for work that was done, and then apply for a new order of conditions. And so all that, before we even came to you. So we did all that, we got proof that the drainage was built properly and is, as shown here. There is an asphalt plan that was submitted to Conservation Commission and to Paul Starrett and Jeremy today. They have a copy of it of that one, Kate, you'll be happy to see, it's black and red. So that one, and with that, there was some computation showing that the volumes is correct in a letter, and that was sent to engineering. Obviously, conservation has that. And basically, the drainage was installed as designed, and everything's working fine. When we got out to the site after 12 years, that had been vacant, there was massive amounts of Japanese knotweed in that basin, so much so that I couldn't see you at all. If you were on the other side, I wouldn't even be able to see you. So that all had to be cut down, so that we could survey it, and that was all cut down by Mr. Cusano and his group. And we surveyed it, everything's fine, and you can see the basin working itself from the down up. It's located there for a reason, because we also have riverfront and other issues with conservation. But going to the right side of that basin, Joe, you'll see a pipe, that's the outlet pipe, and it comes up, we're going upstream now to a manhole, down through the drainage easement to catch basin there, and then up into the roadway itself for another set of catch basins there. That's the drainage system, it's pretty simple. This is 2005 era, so we had stormwater issues back then, we met the stormwater controls at the time. They'd been adjusted a little bit, and as you know, they've been adjusted again this last couple of years with the one-inch for treatment and so forth. We don't meet that one-inch treatment, but we did meet it at the time. The good news is, all that work is Don approved, and we're not going near it again. It's basically installed and placed. When I talked to Paul Starrett about it, he had no issues with the drainage, no issues with the stormwater whatsoever. He had massive issues with the pavement and the curbing. He's like a complete different person. He actually asked, said, "Are we going to go for a shade tree hearing for tonight?" He thought, because there's so many trees that grew in the pavement. So if you've ever driven by there, you probably didn't even notice it, because it had been so overgrown that you really couldn't walk in there, you couldn't drive in there. Don and his crew cleared it all out, but you'll see root balls in the pavement itself, on the edges, you know, usually next to the curbing, that have impacted the base, the curbing, everything. So Paul said, "Yeah, that's all coming out." Because I had talked to him about saving some of it, and parts of it, large sections of it were still okay. He goes, "No, you're not cutting and pasting a pavement, you're going to rip it all out." And my clients have agreed, and rip it all out. He said, "Certainly, you can save materials, so we're not going to rip out and throw away the granite curbing, we're going to rip it out, set it aside, and put it right back." So he's perfectly fine with that approach, and we're fine with that approach, but underlying it, he had no issues with the stormwater whatsoever. You're going to get that report from him eventually. And we're here to up, there's an argument to be made, again, like Melissa said, that we also don't need a stormwater permit, because all the work related to the road was done before we even had regulations. So if we're not doing any work on the road, and it was done before we even had stormwater regulations, why do we need a permit? So again, rather than fight the fight, we just came in asking for the permit and saying, "I'm sure Paul will approve of what we've done, because he's already seen all of it already." So that's where we are in stormwater. As far as all the other utilities in the roadway, like I said, we're going to rip it all up and put it all back under his guidance, so he'll be there watching it all. And I think that, Melissa, makes a good point. If we didn't have this hearing, if we didn't open it up and start all afresh, you're dealing with plans, reports, letters, comments, you got this mishmash of material, not everybody has the same thing. So now you're going to have a set of plans that say what they need to say, and not have to refer to an email, or a note, or something else, so that, that's how mistakes are made, and that's how people mix up without intending to. So now that you have a full set of plans that show everything, makes it all a lot easier for everybody, so. And I think everybody's on board with that, so. It seems like a little tiny thing that we're asking for, but it puts it all back together in one package.
Yep, understood. Great. Anything else?
No, just from a timing standpoint, I think that, I know that the board's meeting schedule coming up, we're going to summer schedule, so I will be asking that, keep this on for the next meeting. Hopefully, Paul can get out there in the next few weeks and review this. We want to hear whatever planning board comments, whatever comments the planning board has. I know we have some abutters here as well, so we want to hear their comments, and hopefully try to address all those comments in the next few weeks, because the next meeting, I think, oh, man, Siri's answering our questions for the board. And then, hopefully have this all tied up for the next June meeting.
Yep.
The only other thing that I would ask, which I generally wouldn't ask at this point, is that perhaps to allow staff to start working on a modification at this point, too, with whatever writings they're going to, because this isn't going to be your standard modification. So hopefully, the board can direct staff also to start working on some ideas on how to craft this decision. That's it.
On that, we've been out there a long time, and you may say, "Why are you coming here so late, it's May, oh, for God's sakes." Well, we had winter, we had knotweed, we went to conservation, they wanted us to complete the whole certificate of compliance process before we did the order of conditions. So we've done all that work before, so you're seeing us at the very, very end.
Gotcha.
And now we're in a sort of a time crunch, because the clients want to build a house, and the next meeting you have after June 6th is July something, so...
Eighteenth?
Yeah, that's a long way away. So hopefully, we can get this done by June 6th.
Yep. Okay, great. Anything else?
No, that is all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Jeff?
Just one thing to add, I do believe that they did have to come back to the board and absolute minimum of updating the security, because we would not be able to sign off on any building permits without that in place. And it could have ranged after that, but at the end of the day, if we get the right plans and updated decisions and clarification, I really think that's in everyone's best interest.
Yep.
Okay. This is a Page 2 item, so I, addressing my questions to you, though, right? Not Joe. I'm just making sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how do we go about tackling this? This is not a new application, right? Are we only focused on the stormwater piece and the roadway, or where, if the board has questions, where should those be sort of directed?
So unless we don't have, we may have some comments from the public tonight that could change this.
I'm sure we do.
So what I would respectfully suggest, I think the more time that we have to actually work on drafting the decision, the better off it will be, because we probably want to take some things into account, like, this is to sort of clarify and supersede prior decisions and/or plans of record. We want to clear paper trails, so that everyone looking this up knows, these are now the record documents going forward. We want to have benefit of engineering department review, and we want to make sure, one of the most important things, to make sure that we have a proper security or estimate in place that takes into account, you know, reconstructing the roadway, not just constructing it for the first time. So we want to make sure that our engineering department is comfortable with that before we bring that value back to the board for consideration. The other things we want to do, as Melissa started to mention, is there's some things that just change with the passage of time. So there's some things that we might not have on those plans, we want to get updated certification from the professional land surveyor, that there's no easements or takings that would affect the subject property, if so, that they be noted. We want to make sure that we address trash and recycling issues, as you know, the select board have instituted that policy, and they are very much expecting that it be addressed. It's clear that with this plan, it's not even a circular turnaround, so the expectation under the policy is that there be some measure provided for trash recycling near Carlisle Road, such that it can be picked up there on the public way. There's no set way of how to go about that, and I'm sure the applicant, since they're going to be living at one of those lots, they want something that's aesthetically pleasing and something that is functional, will work.
Yeah.
And so I think there's a lot of opportunity here, as long as there's some consideration for it in the approved plans.
Right. Well, you sort of have touched on the one idea in my head, or one question in my head, which is, things change over time. So things like, was there a traffic study done at the time that this, you know, subdivision was approved, and are we to take that, that traffic study as still valid now, some 17 years after it was conducted, as the situation in that area could have changed over time, for example?
So what I will say is that a three-lot subdivision...
It's small.
It's small, and in and of itself, that would not trigger that type of formal review. When engineering goes out there and conducts their review, we can ask them if they have any special concerns relative to site distance, but it seems...
It seems, it seems cut and dry, but, you know, again, I don't know if, you know, traffic poles have been put in since then, or other things that could obstruct a view, because again, if this road is so overgrown that people don't really know that it's a road, like, things happen.
I think the biggest hazard right now is the trees growing up at the edge of the pavement, I think.
Clearly.
But we can, we can ask the engineers to take a look at that when they...
So the board can explore these topics in their, in their questions?
Can explore it. I do think, I mean, we're trying to work cooperatively with the applicant now.
Yep.
And obviously, if there's an actual safety issue, you know, engineering is mindful of that, too, and nor do the applicants want there to be a safety issue. So I mean, I think we can have a quick site visit with engineering to see if anything obvious jumps out at them, but if not, I would expect that this would be focused solely on the proposed changes as it relates to the original plan.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Bob, would you care to go first?
Yeah, I believe I actually sat on the definitive hearing for this one, so I know the site really well. My recollection was, you just brought up the traffic. I believe we did have a site distance concern as you go towards Parker Village Schoolhouse in that direction. I seem to recall that was a major discussion topic back then. So we will need to visit that, and I think look at the vegetation, as you said, has grown up since then. I know Jeff said that most of us would not have noticed this. I guess this was kind of a pro on my side, because I was on the definitive, we did everything we could to save that house, so I recall that site very well. It's something we failed at. But yeah, I guess my one question would be how we bonded, as I think you said. I think, I'd like to understand, you know, do we bond it for the full amount, because or are we going to have more information as to what the extent of, extent of the tree removal is going to do in terms of damaging the underlying roadway bed? So that would be my only concern. But yeah, I think we have the benefit of time here on the drainage, to show it works, and address any concerns, so that's the only comment I have.
Great, thanks, Bob. Kate?
Thank you. I've been driving by this street for 26 years, and I never knew it was there.
It's the opposite.
So, yeah, so I appreciate, and I appreciate, and I thank all of you for working together, staff, and you, too, because it is unique, and all the other adjectives he had in his staff report. Just from reading all the comments and such, I was just wondering, did the Conservation Commission have any amendments in their order?
I wasn't at the hearing, but I don't think there was anything very, I got the order right here, let me go through that, Kate, while you continue on, I'll let you know.
And then in the original order it mentioned, I know you want to keep this as a modification, but it said that the roadway and all services had to be done within two years, and your narrative mentioned the roadway, but I didn't hear, read anything about services if they were installed or not, so I was just curious about that. And, because technically, if they weren't, whatever services mean, which I assume is electricity and gas, whatever.
They're wells, so...
Yeah, there's no water, because it's well, the wells are in, but they haven't been connected to the buildings, because there are no buildings yet. And the drainage is in, obviously, and the sewer is not in, because that's septic systems.
And it was good seeing the, the orange and blue figure with the old and new house locations, because I was just curious as to how different they were, and it really isn't, because I had thought, well, engineering, when they review, they might need to confirm stormwater calculations based on new housing. And there was also in the narrative a comment about architectural changes. So I know we had some architectural pictures in the packet, I don't know if those were the old ones or the new ones, but I didn't know if that was part of the decision, and whether or not that had to be modified in the new decision about architectural plans.
I can address that, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. I just put the architectural plans in there, because I thought the board would be curious as to see what was going in there. They're not, there wasn't any specific architectural plans in the original decision, but just to see what the footprints were tying into, I thought the board would like to see what the footprint was. The only one that matters, as Mr. Schaefer pointed out, is that the Lot 1, as a condition of approval, since that house was removed, had to be approved to the design by the Historical Commission. So that's been completed.
Okay, okay. And my, my last comment, because I didn't see anything, because this is such a unique thing, that it was actually done as a flexible development? So technically, one of the units is going to be affordable?
No, no, this doesn't trip any affordable requirement whatsoever, we only have three lots, and...
Well, because, well, it says, I'm looking at the bylaw, it says that minimum of 15% has to be restricted, so I was just curious.
So Kate, this board did, I think it was after Paul's way, I think, we raised that question. There were only four lots there, the board did not require an affordable unit in that instance. Since that time, I think the board reached some consensus that going forward for new projects, you would perhaps look at that differently. But this, in our opinion, we're looking at projects that they...
I just didn't see anything in the...
There wasn't an affordability requirement.
I didn't see anything in the old decision.
Because there was no such requirement.
Anyway, that was it, so those are all my comments. It is pretty straightforward, just waiting to hear from engineering, and I was thinking on, if you still have an electronic copy of the old decision, that you could probably just do the redlining on it, so we could see the modifications that you're making. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kate.
The Chair, if I can answer Kate's question now, order of conditions. There are a lot of little changes, like hay bales turning into straw waddles, a lot of changes having to do with your new requirements, your new standard list of order of conditions, monitoring agents, inspection criteria, all this new stuff. So that's all new, that's to be expected. There was some monuments and markers that they discussed where they were going to go, the 50-foot monument, four-inch by four-inch by 48-inch monuments, so that the people would know where the wetland is and where they're limited. And then the standard condition that you have now, that you want something in the deed, saying that the Conservation Commission, this is conservation land, and so that all homeowners are, that wasn't in the decision before. And I will reiterate, and if you didn't remember, because I didn't say anything, this was natural heritage mapped land, and so we had to go back to natural heritage and get an updated letter, which we did do. We had the original letter signed by Thomas French, where we had an updated letter on March 30, 2022, from Evero Schluter, indicating that there are no issues. We had to maintain a certain disturbed areas, so some of the lots is squished in the back because of that, and that's why, it's having to do with the riverfront area.
But it's nothing that affects the road or the houses?
The road is out of it completely.
Yeah, okay, that was the main concern, that it didn't affect any of the construction work.
I don't want to say there was no changes, but I think they're all very small changes.
Nothing affecting what we care about.
That was part of the reason that we went to conservation first, was to address that concern, that there'd be no major alterations that would have effect to any of the lots or the house layouts or any design, so we knew our area of work had not changed before we came to the planning board.
Okay.
And just to clarify on a point that Kate brought up, before I go to Mike, utilities will be run underground, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent. Mike?
So, in my opinion, we're lucky, in that somebody's already done all the heavy lifting here. So I'm looking at engineering to see what they want to do with the road, and other than that, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Darren?
Yeah, thanks, applicant, for working with staff. I think it's a good approach, and I'm curious to see engineering's comments, which I think will be great. My only comment, Jeff, is this, I'm not sure if this is applicable, because this isn't My only comment, Jeff, is this, I'm not sure if this is applicable, because this isn't stormwater related, but it's service related, so if it's in there and I missed it, was there a fire approval for a turnaround? That's the only thing that may have changed since then, so.
So, we'll double check. I'm not sure. Do we have, didn't we?
I saw a comment from police, but I didn't see a comment from Lieutenant Parsons, so we'll reach out to him prior to the next meeting.
I'd rather see it taken care of now than go off later on, so.
Yes.
Other than that, I like it.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and I'll also thank the applicant for doing the right thing and coming back to kind of modify the plan the right way, rather than trying to fit a 17-year-old decision in and make it work. I would just say that if we can have a sanity check, Jeff, done by, you know, engineering, sort of what we talked about, just confirm site distance hasn't sort of changed. I, I don't want this board to sort of be making a second decision on a decision that a prior body already rendered a decision on in 2005. But if we can just get a general sense that, that engineering is giving a thumbs up all around, that the things that should have been checked are still, still do fully check out, I think that's all we need to see in a revised, modified decision.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to get up and comment on PB 2215, a modification of 85 Carlisle Road? Please.
Emily Teller. Mine Texas Road. I really am grateful for all the work that staff has done with the applicants on this. It obviously shows, and their concern with getting everything up to speed, and it's really important. I have a couple of questions. Will there be street lighting here? Will they have to put in a street light if it's that small?
No, there's no street light proposed.
Yay, okay, that's great. And, let's see, I wanted to let you all know that, can you go back to just the lot, the picture that shows the former locations and the current locations? Because you all may not know this, but the town, oh, that's not what I thought it was going to be. The town is, I guess it will have to show the abutters, some kind of drawing that shows the abutters. The town is installing a safe crossing equipment system. Can I, can I go point to the screen?
To Jack Walsh Field. And it's basically going to be here to get across the crosswalk. But I, I don't know if it's manual or automatic. I think it's probably going to be manual. But the sightlines here are pretty scary, that this goes downhill and curves. So, it's just, I think it'll help the crosswalk, but it may complicate things a little bit in that area. But I just thought I'd let you know that, that's a town project that they're going to, the pedestrian safety committee.
And Jeff, honestly, that was my only thought, is there was obviously a tragic incident in that location sometime back. I don't remember the exact year, and the ball field's there, and there is at times traffic. And it's a fairly active area, and people come through there at a good clip. So, just making sure that the site distance is good would be.
And they often stop right in front of Ann Marieque Way to turn left into Jack Walsh Field. Because the park, the crosswalk is on the far side of the entrance to Jack Walsh Field.
Right.
In other words, Jack Walsh Field's entrance is really right by Ann Marieque. It's kind of right, it's kind of right here. And here's the parking area. And this is right to the side, and then the playground's over here. So, lots of cars will be stopping here to turn in, so it's a little tricky.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have a look at that. Thank you.
I have two other questions. I did go to the ConsecCon hearing, and I was pleased to hear that part of their order of conditions is a four-foot stone pillar to clearly dissent, delineate the no work beyond this area. And I just, you know, I hope that includes not throwing anything out into that area or anything. I, I just, that's not your bailiwick, but I was pleased to hear that. And I think that's a sensitive enough area beyond lots two and three that it would make a difference. And my last question is, I wonder if the proponents would consider all electric, mini-split and heat pumps and no gas? I'm a member of the Westford Climate Action, and my husband is on the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and also the Electric Vehicle Committee that you guys are working on. And, you know, it's going into the future. We really want to be a greener town. And I think you can't mandate it, but I would just like to throw it out there that it's much more efficient going forward for the homeowner. And with the aggregate electrical contract that we have, it could be 100% clean energy. And also perhaps no gas stoves to have, blanking out on the name that we have.
Induction.
Induction stoves, yeah. So, thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. I don't know if you have any response to that or thoughts?
No, I agree with Ms. Teller that the, it's nice to have that demarcation in the back. You can see it in older neighborhoods, where especially going back to the resource areas that people's yards tend to expand to those resource areas are not protected. It's nice to have the signage back there and some permanent blocks. So, that is one of the bonuses, I think, of going back to conservation, is we'll actually be more environmentally sound here because we're going to be in conformance with the new regulations. And also get rid of all of the invasive species that are back there as well. So, no, I'm in agreement with that.
Good luck getting rid of the knotweed.
Yes, it's gone for now, to the extent that we can get rid of it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the audience care to comment on PB 2215? Okay, so seeing none, I think staff, do you, Jeff, do you need anything else from us as far as direction?
I think we have direction. We'll work with engineering. We'll start working on draft decisions for your consideration. I do just want to know, I do want to thank the applicant. We actually had a number of meetings over a long period of time, and they were very cooperative. So, thank you for joining us in this approach.
Thank you very much. All right, is there a motion to continue PB 2215 to the June 6th meeting of the Planning Board here in Meeting Room 201 at 7:00 PM?
I'll move. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you very much.
See you on the second. All right. Let's get to the next one here.
Page 245.
That's a big gym. Got it. All right. Our next public hearing item is PB 2217, a zoning bylaw amendment for 483 Groton Road to include 483 Groton Road in the industrial zoning, IA zoning district. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing notice?
I'll move. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on PB 2217?
I'll move. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, we are open. Jeff?
Hey, I do not see the petitioner, however, that doesn't change what the board is obligated to do. So, before you, this is the required public hearing per Mass. Turn law, Chapter 40A. The Planning Board is tasked with holding a public hearing for any zoning bylaw amendment that is being proposed. In this case, it's by citizen's petition, and as for 483 Groton Road, I think we put together a brief, but a good background of the situation.
Yep.
So, many years ago, these folks were trying to move their business and buy, acquire property. An honest mistake was made on the part of the town. They were told by the then-Billing Inspector that it was industrial A zoning. In fact, it was residence A zoning. They did go to the zoning board to get explicit relief for their particular business. And so, they got a use variance for their hair salon on the first floor and office use on the second floor. Fast forward, and then in, you know, when COVID hit, they had to close their business. They were unable to successfully market their property. There was very little residential interest in this property. And so, now they have a two-pronged attack to try to market this property. So, first, they did petition the zoning board to modify the use variance, to change it all to office space, both first and second floor. That petition is being heard Wednesday evening. Separate from that, in case that does not go forward, or if the sale, potential sale falls through, they would like to try to rezone the property to the industrial A zoning district, which, as you can see, it's kind of bounded on by, by three sides. And they are, you know, surrounded by industrial uses there. So, so the Plan Board is obligated to weigh in on this matter and provide some kind of recommendation. Anticipating a question about spot zoning, we did reach out to Town Council in advance to seek the opinion if this would be considered spot zoning. Because normally, that's for relatively small tract of land, changing it from one zone to another to the perceived benefit of that affected property owner and to the perceived detriment of the adjoining property owners. So, in this case, we did not feel it screamed of spot zoning, but we definitely want to have benefit of council before you folks weighed in from the perception of some of the abutting property owners, given that it already was sort of commercially used. From their perspective, it may not effectively change. And there's still one other lot that's residentially zoned next to them. We suggested that they reach out to that property owner as well. But apparently, at this time, that property owner did not have interest in pursuing it at, at this time. So, so I don't know if, if that helps to have some background. Council did opine that they did not think that it would be considered spot zoning so long as, in the Planning Board public hearing process, if you could indicate whether or not there was some public interest being served. In that case, they did not feel it would be spot zoning. So, you have a lot of latitude, a lot of discretion, and we're here to try to help you if you have any questions.
And in reality, this just stops the owners from going before ZVA every time there's a change of ownership or use.
Well, we know that use variances are generally frowned upon these days, so to them, I mean, we suggested to them, we gave them a whole range, there was many options to consider. And, you know, they thought really that their property, they always thought it was industrial A. They went into buying it thinking it was. They had reason to think it was. And it's surrounded by those uses, and to them, you know, the, the ideal solution would be to just have it zoned what they always thought it was and would be consistent with the surrounding uses.
It makes sense, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But that's for town meeting to say, but they will certainly look to this board's recommendation.
Just for people who will be watching this when they have insomnia.
When would that be? It's a long.
And also, in preparation for, for town meeting, I think it would be useful, because I know you have zoning bylaws etched in your memories, like, because it says industrial A. And people are going to freak out with industrial. But looking at our Appendix A, the Table of Principal Use Regulations, maybe it's easier for you to read. Maybe you can just state what some of the allowed uses are, because that might help people.
Sure.
Asphalt. Basketball.
Graveling.
So, so single-family dwellings are still an allowed use in the IA. There's other things that could be allowed with benefit of a special permit, such as conversion of a dwelling, which is allowed in the residential district anyhow. A lot of these would not apply, like in open space residential development or flexible development. Let's see, trying to see what differs from the RA.
But, but the businesses, they're more like personnel businesses, that they're, they're not like heavy industry type of businesses.
So.
Like, late manufacturing would probably be allowed, right?
So, retail sales to the general public is one of the first big ticket items. So, retail sales could happen in the industrial A district, whereas that's not permitted in the residence A.
But that's like what they're doing now anyway, so, kind of.
Philbrook, right, right next door.
Exactly. Yep. Also, a major retail project is permissible with benefit of a special permit from the Planning Board. But again, that tract of land is, wouldn't really practically be able to get a major commercial project.
Right.
Motor vehicle services with a special permit, motor vehicle repair services, again, kind of similar to some of the, the Philbrook Motorsports. Things that differ are, could potentially have a funeral home there. And a hotel, though there certainly isn't the area for that. So, there's a lot of, and a restaurant is another possibility. So, there's a lot of things that might be allowable, but due to the limited area, it's under an acre. From a practical standpoint, you couldn't really have like a, a large parking lot to accommodate more, more, some of those intense uses. So, it would be more like the retail sales to the general public is what we would expect.
Thank you.
Can't allow a hotel there, or we'll have to pay more than four houses. Those are the monopolies.
Yeah, that's the rule.
Hey, we can have a printing establishment or a newspaper. Maybe we'll, somebody will set up our own local paper now.
Okay.
So. So, the former Silhouettes Hair.
Yeah.
Yes. Business.
Hair salon, right? Yes. So, I guess we can go around to the board, express an opinion. I know we oftentimes will keep these kinds of topics open for two meetings, but I think the Select Board would like the benefit of knowing our opinion on this so that they can have an opinion on this prior to town meeting. Is that fair?
So, it is fair to say that the Select Board genuinely appreciates input or recommendations from this board before they take action for their recommendation. I will say that the FinCom booklet is going to the printers this Friday. So, effectively, if you don't decide your recommendation tonight.
Right.
They're not going to have benefit of that. Now, obviously, this board needs to do what they feel most comfortable doing. And we do know that we have received requests for written recommendations. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't decide how you're recommending tonight and flesh out more of a written recommendation a little bit down the road. That is a possibility.
Sure. Okay. So, with that in mind, Darren, would you care to offer an opinion?
Yeah, I, I don't really have a strong opposition to changing it to industrial A, especially if it's, a residential use is still allowable. So, someone could come in potentially and buy it and keep it as a house.
They could. It doesn't currently have a kitchen, is my understanding, but that's curable.
Yeah, I mean, that's a little remodeling, but I think that way, it's actually probably more flexible than if someone wanted to come in and make it something else, and, you know, if, provided it doesn't pass a variance. So, I'm happy with changing it.
I would suggest we close the public hearing, and I would approve, I would recommend that we approve.
Kate?
I agree. I, I think in terms of justification, it's similar to what we did with the parcel that Petz, Petz is on now, where it was a rezoning of a residential to commercial that abutted existing commercial. And so, here we're, it's rezoning residential to something that's right next door to it, the IA. And it, and it does make a more, whatever the word was, that the IA doesn't have that jag in it. It, it makes the.
So, makes that district.
It's appealing to the engineering and engineer in me.
I'm trying to put words in your mouth. Are you suggesting that it would actually make that district more uniform or less not uniform?
Yeah, because, because you, like you said, you already have on three sides of it. So, it, it makes sense. You have a straight, unlike straight lines, yeah.
That they relied on the letter from the town.
I want to be careful that your, you know, I mean, that, that, that's something that town meeting might, and maybe it's something that you folks will take in, but I wouldn't want to use that as.
As justification.
No.
I understand.
Public interest, although.
And, and, and as I said, the public interest, I don't know, I'm not an assessor of the difference in evaluations for commercial or, or non-residential versus residential properties. But if, if it's higher, then that's a benefit to the town for, for tax purposes.
I think, Joe, did you put together some possible thoughts for consideration as well? I don't know if any of those were commendable to the board.
He had some lists in his, in his staff report that I, I thought were good.
Should we go to Bob? Bob, do you have an, an opinion on this?
Yeah, I guess I'm generally in favor of it, given that it's a surrounding use argument as well as it's been performing as this, so I have no opposition. In fact, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of it.
Yeah, and I agree. I'm in favor as well. I, I think everybody's points here have been well taken. I think it does make that district a little more contiguous. I think it also, let's face it, the, the Groton Road corridor is a commercial, you know, way through the town of Westford, and I think having more flexibility in the industrial, you know, having more space and more lots that are zoned with flexibility to do things that serve the public interest, like having a retail establishment and things like that, can only benefit the town through increased tax revenue and, and otherwise. So, more flexibility on, on major thoroughfares through the town is probably good.
I agree.
Okay, so, is there a motion to close the public hearing on PB 2217?
I'll move. Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Is there a motion to recommend PB 2217 at town meeting for the rezoning of 483 Groton Road to industrial IA zoning from residential? A or B? Is it residential?
Residence A.
Residential, from residential A?
Yes.
I'll move.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor to recommend, say aye. Bob? Motion in a second. All those in favor to recommend say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much. So would you like us to prepare a very brief, uh, written report for your consideration based on the input tonight?
Please.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Since our illustrious leader, whoever that is, after the next meeting, will probably have to give up and give a report, maybe.
Yep.
At town meeting.
Okay. General business. General business topic A this evening is to consider a request for minor modifications to a prior approval in order to record endorsed plans and other legal documents for PB seventeen oh seven, open space residential development, uh, at Spalding Hill Estates, prior to the execution of the conservation restriction.
So, I'm glad this brings meritment to Mr. Chair. So, um, thank you. So as you may recall, with a number of our open space residential developments, we learned that it was not a good idea to have all of the legal documents be simultaneously recorded, because conservation restrictions in particular usually take far longer, because it involves other parties, including parties from the state, so that is not nearly as timely. And so what we have done since then, as we wised up to that, is we have specifically excluded CRs from the simultaneous recording with all the various legal documents with the plans. So what we're asking for the board to do in this case is to make a finding that this is a minor change and to authorize the exclusion of the CR document from your condition that requires the simultaneous recording of the dozen or so documents. And so staff strongly supports this. And so we also received, uh, written notification from, um, the purchaser, the would-be purchaser, that would happen when all these documents happen, that they are willing to make any minor changes as may be requested by the conservation commission and/or the state, because they will be the ones that have the control. And they understand that failure to act in good faith could be grounds for withholding a certificate of occupancy. So, the commission is on board with this, staff is on board with this, I really hope you're on board with this. And that way, we think we're just being fair and having a, uh, being consistent with subsequent decisions.
So you're looking for an approval?
Finding that it's minor
Yep.
change, minor modification, and to authorize the exclusion of the CR document from the required simultaneous recording of all the legal documents and the plans.
So this would just require a language tweak to say excluding?
Yep, the CR.
Yeah, because I'm trying to, the last time this attorney came before us, there was some debate about language, but that was in some other document, not in this order.
It's been a lot of debates about this one, yep.
I just want to make sure that it's very simple.
Very simple. Just the CR document, which we already have, a partially executed CR document from the current applicant. And we'll be getting whatever we need for tweaks and changes from the developer. We have that in writing and they know if they don't act in good faith, we want to make sure that we had assurances from the purchaser, the developer, that you could get little changes if needed. But the commission was essentially fine with that, but we have that opportunity if needed.
And you have it in writing?
We have it in writing. It's notarized.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else care to comment before we, I guess, put forward a motion for the board to act upon?
Seems minor to me. No, I'm all except.
Yeah, I tend to agree. Bob?
I'm fine with this. I'm good.
Is there a motion?
I move that we, uh, for PB one seven oh seven, Spalding Hill Estates, find that the change, uh, requiring the conservation restriction to be recorded at the time of the other documents to be a minor modification and allow staff to, uh, modify that decision accordingly.
Or to exclude that requirement.
To exclude that requirement.
Great.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, general business topic B this evening is a discussion to take positions on the annual town meeting articles or take any other actions related there too. All right, so, um...
I didn't know if we should take one on Article seven. I, I just looked at it. I didn't know if it was something that we...
Perhaps yes, we can take stock on which ones we, we will be taking action on. I think Article eighteen, right, is one that we
Yep.
Yeah.
Just took
Technically, we just did.
Already did, right?
I had fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, and seven, as potential ones.
Seventeen. You had fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen?
I didn't have seventeen, but I did, I had seven,
Oh, yeah, right.
fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, that I thought.
And it looked like nineteen they were asking. I believe at the end, nineteen has a spot for our vote, which
Potentially. The only one that you're absolutely mandated to weigh in on, sorry, Joe.
We already have, right?
You already have.
Well, we have that one.
So...
But there's, sometimes it's nice to weigh in.
Out of curiosity, what happened to the, the proposed for auxiliary units? Did you decide you needed to spend more time crafting that one?
Eighty years?
Accessory dwellings, rather?
That's what we mentioned at the beginning of the hearings. We made some tweaks based on the feedback from this board and the zoning board
That's what legal.
to the purpose section. And then we submitted that to town council for their review, so we could start.
But it, but it's not in the, I don't see it in the town meeting.
It wouldn't be for, it wouldn't be for this town meeting. It would be for the October.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, Kate, the first one you said was
Maybe seven. I didn't know, because that has to do with
With the construction of the fire training facility?
No, seven is
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute.
Fire training town.
What did it, where did I say seven?
Oh, just because we voted on it?
Yep.
I don't know. That, if it's not really appropriate, I'm fine with excluding that one. I just thought
Yeah, I don't know that it's, is that, that it's, we should vote on that, right?
Okay, I'm fine with dropping it.
No, I understand what you're saying, Kate, since we approved it, but again.
Somebody can just say it went before the planning board and they approved it unanimously.
Right. Okay, so are we passing on seven then, it sounds like?
Yeah.
All right, fourteen?
I just thought because easements, because
They were all conditions of approvals.
Yeah.
Do you agree with yourselves?
Yeah.
Do I want to make, make a motion to approve?
We recommend adopt, we recommend approval of this
Article fourteen? We obviously recommend approval. I'll second.
Motion in a second to recommend Article fourteen on the, uh, town meeting schedule, agenda.
Warrant.
Warrant, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Say aye. Okay. Fifteen? That's easements for the plain road sidewalk project.
And I, I, I just say this as a, as the board's representative on the pedestrian safety committee, because we're working on that.
Yep.
Although since safety is part of our purview,
Yeah.
I think it's probably appropriate, right?
Yeah.
That we could So unless there's discussion, I move that, uh, we, uh, we vote to recommend Article fifteen on the town warrant.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Sixteen?
I think that's the same as fifteen, right? Safety.
Yeah, again, this is something the pedestrian safety committee is, um, requesting for safety.
I move that we vote to recommend Article sixteen of the warrant to town meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second to recommend Article sixteen on the town meeting warrant. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
You speed?
I don't, I don't, I, I just, I mean, I'll state my, I'll, I'll always state my intent. I don't have enough background information here to know whether or not dropping the speed by five miles an hour is actually something that constitutes higher safety in those areas that are already at thirty, or whether what we have is an enforcement issue and people routinely are going above thirty. So I don't, I just don't, I don't have enough information to take a position on that. I'm generally not in favor, I'm generally not in favor of reducing freedoms unless I know that that comes with the safety that one would maybe jump to the conclusion it would, but I don't, I had not researched that topic enough. So, uh, are we on seventeen? Nope, not seventeen.
No, we're not doing seventeen.
Eighteen we've already done?
No, we haven't done eight.
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
Well, we've done it by
It was the public hearing.
That was the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
We just did that in the public hearing, right?
Yep.
That was it?
Well, there's nineteen. There, we have a spot on nineteen for authorizing, authorize the conservation commission to lease the Hill Orchards parcel.
I don't know how that comes to us, right?
I'm not a hundred percent clear on that either, but they have a little spot for our vote.
I should think it's, maybe that's a typo and it should be conscom. I don't know.
Well, I think it was, uh, lack of, uh, it was kind of ambivalence. There was uncertainty. So I know from speaking with our agents, their thought process is the typical leases are for only three years. And so sometimes for some folks who would put their name in the hat, three years is not a long enough time period to weigh in and try to make a lot of, uh, changes or invest a lot, whereas they might get a different crop of, uh, candidates if it were for five years or it's a longer time period. And so it may, it allows for up to five. So I know that they see that as a win for the town and potential a win for those candidates. But, you know, if you don't feel comfortable weighing in, you don't have to weigh in. We can just have them remove that.
I mean, it's an established business there on, on Hunt Road. They already, so this isn't going to change what they have for parking or anything like that.
No, but I think if they, they would look differently at potentially, um, what I have heard is that they would think differently about investing more if it were for a longer time period. And they're less likely to do that if it's a mere three-year time period.
But again, I don't know how that affects planning board.
I mean, yeah.
Great, so if you're not comfortable weighing in, don't weigh in.
Good.
They'll just strike and planning board.
I'm happy striking planning board.
Fine.
Okay.
Just sounded funny, sorry.
Striking.
Oh! We're striking?
Yes.
All right. I believe we've completed everything in general business. Moving on to correspondence, reports and updates, we have a review of draft minutes from April nineteenth of twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April nineteenth of twenty twenty-two?
Remove.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
No. You guys are getting good?
I had
Minutes taken, so, but
I had one thing
Either that or I don't pay attention to people's names and addresses.
Actually, I did have one comment.
Go ahead, Darren.
Oh, let's, let me find it. Sorry, oh. Under general business, line one seventy, it says, uh, D. Tom Teller. Oh, that was just, was that item? No, it's item D. Okay, forget it. I was thinking that was his initial and they put that there. Good.
Yeah, it confused me too when I realized the first one was the title for the subject.
Yeah. Joe, row, or I guess, yeah, row one fourteen. So it says, O'Connor responded that a preliminary plan approval would only be guidance and non-binding. Can we clean that up a little to say, O'Connor responded that a preliminary plan approval only provides guidance to the applicant and is non-binding?
Sounds like a good change.
Thanks. Otherwise, I'm good. Any other comments on the, uh, minutes from April nineteenth? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
I abstain.
And I will say aye. So those meetings are going to be approved, or those minutes are going to be approved either way. All right, and that's it. There's no other correspondence. We've reached the end.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
I say aye. Good evening, everybody.